On behalf of the PTA, it is my pleasure to welcome you to tonight's debate, featuring the candidates for our Board of Education. My name is Peggy Angelo. I am the president of the PTA and coordinating this discussion with the assistance of the League of Women Voters, one of the most important events I think the PTA does. I would like to thank the community for actively participating in this debate and for the questions that were submitted. I would also like to thank Susan Warnos for kindly accepting the role to help organize the event and to keep time this evening. I would also like to thank Alice Tenney for sharing her expertise and moderating this discussion for us this evening. The Board of Education plays a crucial role in shaping the policies and the direction of our school district. Tonight, we have the privilege of hearing from the candidates themselves and to learn about, learn a little bit more about each one. We have three wonderful candidates for the Board of Education this evening. They are Michelle Fret, Lori Gerald, and Allison Halloran. So without further ado, I will turn the mic over to Alice.
Does this, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Well, as I was already introduced, very kindly by Peggy, I am Alice Tenney and I'm the moderator for tonight's forum. Please note that I am not a voter in this district as the League requires, so I'm completely nonpartisan in this contest. Tonight's forum will follow the League's traditional format, beginning with opening statement from each candidate, followed by a question and answer period, and finishing up with closing statements from each candidate. The order of the candidates' opening statements has been determined by lot. The reverse order will be used for closing statements. Opening and closing statements are not to exceed one minute. Responses to questions will be limited to 90 seconds. Note that our timekeeper will be visible to the candidates and will alert the panel when 30 seconds of response time are remaining, and then again when it's time to stop. Candidates will be able to finish any sentences they have started. The candidates are allowed two rebuttals each over the course of the evening. Rebuttal time will be 30 seconds and there will be no responses to rebuttals. However, after closing statements, I reserve the right to grant a further rebuttal if it is deemed necessary. Other rules: The candidates will not interrupt each other or the moderator during the forum. As moderator, I reserve the right to pause, or if necessary, to halt the proceedings to enforce the ground rules and format. I don't expect to do either of those. Please note that the candidates have not been provided with any of the questions ahead of time. Finally, except for time limits, the only restriction on candidate statements and answers is respect and civility. Okay, so our candidates, before we started, had already chosen their order by lot, and they are Michelle Fret on the left, Lori Gerald in the middle, and on the right, Allison Halloran. So we will start with opening statements from Michelle.
Good evening. Thank you to the community, the League of Voters, and our PTA for facilitating this evening's candidate forum. My name is Michelle Fret, and I am a 10-year resident of Tuckahoe. I have two daughters that attend the high school right here in Tuckahoe. I am a career educator of 31 years and a lifelong learner. I am currently the Assistant Director of Special Education in a neighboring school district. During the last 10 years, I have become a visible and vocal advocate for students in Tuckahoe because I believe every student matters. I have been an active member of the PTA, as well as a current member of the Executive Board of Task. I believe there is a need for parent and student voice in the decision-making process in this district. I believe the school board requires a member that has expertise and experience in the field of education, who can partner with the school district's superintendent and administrators to ensure that all of our students are career and college-ready and are contributing members to society and the community at large.
Thank you. Now Lori Gerald, your opening statement, please.
Hi, my name is Lori Gerald. I'm a former trustee of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District Board of Education. I'm running to regain a seat on the board this year to continue progress toward ensuring an innovative quality education program that prepares each of our learners to interact, survive, and thrive as 21st century learners and world citizens. My family and I have been members of the school community for 12 years. I fiercely advocated for quality education and the importance of early literacy. My doctoral work confirmed my belief that early literacy and the development of critical thinking skills are essential to success in all aspects of learning. As a board member, I supported this expansion of the universal pre-K program, and it was very important to me that we build a very strong literacy program. I'm a career educator with over 25 years, 30 years I should say, of experience, and I look to rejoin the board and do all the great things that it does.
Thank you. And Allison Halloran.
Hello, I'm Allison Halloran. As an accountant in the business office at Pelham School District, I will bring to the board my vast knowledge of school finance and budgeting. I am deeply involved in many aspects of what it takes to run an exemplary school district and will bring that experience to Tuckahoe to continue to build on our success. For almost two decades, I have been a fierce voice at Board of Ed meetings, advocating for our students and teachers. I have focused on school safety, differentiated learning, and professional development. Through my efforts in volunteering, I have already made significant contributions of change in our district. Along with my husband and our four children, I have been part of the Tuckahoe schools for the past 20 years. My passion for this community is unwavering. I have served on the Board of Task and on many school committees, including District Safety, the Coddle Principal and Superintendent Search, and PTA President. As Board of Ed trustee, I will apply my professional expertise in school business, my passion for advocacy, and my deep historical knowledge of Tuckahoe schools to elevate our district to the next level.
Thank you. So moving on to our questions, our first question, and we will again start with Michelle, and then we'll be rotating. Why are you running for the school board? What problem or problems or issue or issues are you most concerned about?
As I said in my opening statement, I have become a very visible and vocal voice for students with varying needs. In my expertise as being a special education administrator and working with students both in the general education and special education capacities, I've had the opportunity to speak with many families and learn different processes that students, students learning. What I've found is there are many gaps in the learning of students of general education in literacy, but there are also many gaps in compliance here in Tuckahoe when it comes to special education services. The concern is that there is not a student voice when we have a child of five years old who cannot speak for him or herself, and parents are having difficulty reaching out to the administrators and to the directors within the district on how to support their own children. With that, that is the reason I am running today.
Thank you. And if you need me to repeat the question, please just ask. We'll now move to Lori, please.
Yes, I am also a career educator. I've spent many years as a literacy specialist, working both within school districts and a whole state Department of Education to improve literacy for students across the state. I have received my doctorate in education, focused on critical thinking skills and learning for young children. I'm excited today to be here with you, to even let you know that I decided to go back into the classroom. That was a choice that I had. I decided to go back in because I did not want to be an administrator who is out of touch with what is going on in the classroom, frontline education. So I've gone back, and I'm enjoying myself with my, with my little first graders. Since I arrived here 12 years ago, I've been a fierce advocate for strong literacy services for our students, and I'm looking forward to continuing the strides that we have made. When I first came here, we had elements of strong literacy programming. However, it was not being implemented well, and teachers were poorly trained, so it was very disjointed. And through my advocacy, I've seen lots of changes, and a lot of things that I really pushed for come to fruition. And I look to continue to do that work with this board.
Thank you. Allison.
Hi. As I mentioned in my opening statement, I am hoping to apply my previous advocacy and my passion for the district and my deep historical knowledge of the district. I am the type who gets involved right from the get-go. I work collaboratively with members of the community and our district. When I moved here in 2004, I immediately joined the task board because task was something that I needed. In my time of being here, I have worked with four of our six superintendents, four of our six Coddle principals, four of our four middle school principals, and three of our six special education directors. I'm committed to this district, and one of the things that I'm most concerned about in changing is hoping to bring fiscal clarity. I believe our district is doing a wonderful job, but I do believe that there are processes in the budgeting that we can look closer at and see if we can do a better job. I also would like to focus on professional development. I have been a large advocate, speaking about teacher training and making sure that our teachers are fully prepared to be able to teach all of our students across the board to make a successful classroom.
Thank you. Question number two, and we'll start with Lori. Most candidates campaign on promises of what they will do if elected. What have you already done for the district? And I realize some of these questions overlap a little bit, and they may have some redundancies in them, but nothing wrong with reiterating.
Sure. So as I stated, when I came here 12 years ago, there were elements of strong curriculum programming, such as Lucy Culkin's writing and reading programs, Fontis and Penel leveled readers, but what I saw was that it was not being implemented well, and teachers weren't doing it. Probably, I'm thinking, because they did not have the support that they needed in terms of professional development that was ongoing. And also knowledgeable administrators that can assist them in their growth and learning to implement and work within these programs with fidelity. So since coming here, and you guys can look back over the YouTube videos over the years, you will see how hard I advocated to beef up the foundation of our learning, especially at the elementary level. The problem is, if we don't, students, it's like a building. I always give this analogy. It's like a building. If the foundation is weak, then the building, as it gets taller and grows and develops, only crumbles, and the building comes tumbling down. So I want to make sure that we continue to build a strong foundation of literacy and learning for our young people, so that as they transition and develop up to the middle and high school and out of high school, that they are ready to compete in this global and diverse society.
Thank you.
Can you just read the question one more time?
Yes, of course. "Most candidates campaign on promises of what they will do if they are elected. What have you already done for the district?"
So as I mentioned, I have been a big part of the district for the past 20 years. In my time, I have served on several committees, and with those committees, I have made effective policy change for community, for better communication. I have advocated for school safety, asking for, serving on the school safety district committee, asking for better security for our schools, advocating for the security vestibules. I had a boots-on-the-ground effort for the 2018 bond, also the 2021 bond. I worked with the PPLT committee and helped create the differentiation of the fifth-grade departmentalization program, which helped bring our learning of our Coddle up to the middle school level to make it easier for them. I have implemented programs for social-emotional learning, bringing in drug program awareness and social anxiety awareness. I have been nonstop advocating at board, at board meetings, asking for change, questioning, and digging deep into how we can be better.
Thank you. Michelle?
So during the 10 years that my family and I have lived here, I right away started to volunteer within the schools at Coddle. I was a parent member for the Halloween parties and any get-togethers or meetings that they may have had, and then I became an active member of the PTA and the Executive Board. On the Executive Board, I have done two years in four separate committees. Dance Committee, Membership Committee, the High School Committee, and the Student Support Committee. I'm sorry, only one year on high school so far. The one committee that I feel I made the most impact on was the Student Support Committee. It allowed me to reach out to many families in the district who needed support with students of varying needs on how to get services, as well as how to utilize their own strengths to build up their education. What I did find is families that I did not know got my name and phone number from others that I helped along the way, and I think this, that was the cornerstone of me starting this campaign, is really to get to know more families that feel the need to get that support and become part of the community with the administrators and teachers.
Thank you. Onto question number three. Are you satisfied with the current administration? If so, in what way? And if not, why? We'll start with Allison, please.
I am satisfied with the current administration. I am happy that we finally have some stability. As I mentioned, I have worked in my 20 years with six different superintendents and six different principals for the, for Coddle, and four different principals for middle school, and six different special ed directors in 20 years. That's a lot of turnover, and that really hurts our district. The instability of not having someone consistently leading the pack, leading the rules, and striving for a better education really hurts us. So I am happy with them. Do I feel that there is room for improvement? Absolutely, absolutely. And I will work towards that collaboratively with my other board members, working towards guiding our superintendent to be the best that she can be, and to really focus on what we can do for our district and how she can support her administration, so that they are always thinking about the students and moving forward and doing what's best for them.
Thank you. Michelle?
I'm happy to say I am satisfied with the administration. I do feel that there is work to be done within our administrative staff. Our superintendent is currently working many, many hours and having many, many hats, understanding that our superintendent is currently our human resources administrator as well, has me have some pause with how the hiring practices have been put forth in the district. As the superintendent has her own business to run and be a liaison with the school board, I believe it's very difficult for her to also have such a stressful, aggressive job post with being in human resources. So that was, was a concern to me. Our administrators in our middle school and high school, although very strong, very aggressive when it comes to supporting our students, they are, what I feel specifically the two assistant principals, are overworked in the tasks that they are given, and there is not equity in the tasks that they have right now. One works also as our athletic director, and the other works very closely with guidance for master schedules. So I'd like to look a little bit deeper at the roles of each one of our administrators in the district.
Thank you. Lori, same question.
So I'm very pleased with the work of our administrators and those that we have in place. Having been here over the years, like Allison, we got to see a lot of transition from one administrator to the other. Dr. Goodman has come here and really, really transformed with the help of the administrators that have been put in place, and our wonderful teaching staff, as well as our school community, to put into the foundations that we needed across the board, from curriculum, special education, through our sports program and the like. I appreciate how she has made herself available to hear what parents' concerns are and really move to make sure that every student's needs are being met. She has done a tremendous and wonderful job, and I think that about our assistant superintendent. He's come in, he's very knowledgeable, he stays on the cutting edge of curriculum and instruction, and I think they're doing a tremendous job, so much better than what we had years prior. And so I'm very pleased with what they're doing. Of course, there's always room for improvement, and I believe that they demonstrate every day how open they are to addressing our concerns as their school community members. So yes, I'm very pleased with them, and we're a work in progress.
Thank you. Similarly, along similar lines, boards of education can make a lasting impact on a school district. What past efforts, if any, made by the Tuckahoe School Board do you particularly value? And we will start with Michelle.
The past efforts that I have seen from this, the school board in recent years is really working to be fiscally productive and supporting the community and the taxpayers with providing the students with the appropriate supports and services that they need, but also being very fiscally responsible and not increasing the taxes for the homeowners too much over the years. Particularly this year, I've noted that the budget that is going through is below the increase allowable, which I think is probably the first time in a long time. So I think we should be very proud as a community that the board works tirelessly, along with the superintendent, on making these things work.
Thank you. Lori?
Can you repeat the question?
Of course. Boards of education can make a lasting impact on a school district. What past efforts, if any, made by the Tuckahoe School Board do you particularly value?
I think one of the biggest things is having brought in a superintendent and administrative staff who've been consistent, because again, as Allison and I both said, we were here when there was great transition revolving door of administrators. This is the first time, and I, since Dr. Goodman has come, that we've, it's been consistent. And I appreciate the work that they're, they're doing. They have, again, brought in tiered instruction. We've made sure that the professional development and continuing professional development is in place. We make sure that even our ad hoc committees are, there are application processes for that, so that when we bring in these ad hoc committees, the people that are serving on them actually have experience in the areas in which they're working. Lots of great things have happened. I believe we have a better teacher morale than I've seen in previous years here, and we have administrators who really, really care about the students and their growth as learners, and that they are propelled in society to work and do really well. Our ratings have gone improved in the last, well, even when I was on the board, exponentially. I think we went from like 31 or 35 up to like 20, and now we're at 16. So I think the record speaks for itself that we have great administrators in place and a wonderful community that supports their work.
Thank you. Next question, which is creative. A former principal-
Wait, wait.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm so sorry. I did it again. Don't mean to leave you out. Go right ahead. Michelle?
So one of the-
Allison.
It's okay. Got it. What I feel the board has made a lasting impact on is really our capital improvements. Most of the board has been involved in three capital improvement plans, which, you know, some of them we are still in the works, but they have put forth the bonds. They were thoughtful plans, and they really focused on the needs of our facilities to move forward. I do feel that bringing in the superintendent and the superintendent search that we did was another lasting effect that they will have. Dr. Goodman having the stability that we have now in the district is absolutely key. The way that they support the administration, Dr. Goodman and her assistant superintendents and her principals, and also the way that they really look at data. They ask for workshops to provide data so that they can see that the programs we have going on that they have put into the budget are working, and how they're working, and what needs to be changed.
Thank you. Now time for the creative question. A former school principal reportedly once described the middle school years in terms of an Oreo cookie, the best part being the middle, the bottom being elementary school and the top being high school. Are you in favor of reinstating a principal for our middle school so that this quote-unquote "best part" of our students' education gets the attention and leadership it may need? We'll start with Lori, please.
Oreo cookie, okay. I am in support of having a middle school principal, but I think that that would depend on what the school community decided through budget planning, as well as supports in place. We're a very small district. We only have two buildings, and, and so I think that I would want to make sure that one of our district can support another administrator financially. I would want to make sure that it makes sense to our school community. I would really seek to decide what they think and make a decision from there. I know that we did have one in the past, but the, the feedback was that we were administrator-heavy unless money was available to attend to staffing needs, teacher development, and also student achievement. So I'm not sure if it would be a good idea to go back there, but we could always canvas and survey our school community to find out if that would be something that they would be interested in going back to.
Thank you. Allison?
I do feel that our current structure does put a lot of stress on our, our high school, middle school principal, and also our assistant principal. The way that we restructured it, they really have to wear a lot of hats, and, for example, our assistant principal is not only responsible for the management of, management of our athletic department, but it's also, he's also responsible for the management of our building-level services. He's responsible for some DASSA reporting, and each of those, you know, most districts take, have just an athletic director. Most districts have just someone who's responsible for the DASSA. We're really asking for our high school, middle school principal and our assistant principals to really take on a lot of work. I don't know if it's budgetarily responsible to hire another principal in the middle school, because that was one of the reasons why we abolished the position. It may also not legally be possible because of the way that we abolished the position. However, I do feel that there is definite- However, I do feel that there is definite restructuring that needs to go on, and maybe if we don't rehire someone at a principal level with such a high salary, we could certainly maybe use a director with a lower salary, but still being able to take on some of the weight that is carried by the staff.
Thank you. Michelle.
So I would agree with both of my fellow candidates. When it comes to our community, with our middle school and high school being one physical building, it is often difficult to have two heads of that building. You do see that in some of the schools in the city where in one building they'll have four separate high schools, and I think it's very difficult for the administrators to have a common mind that way. I'm also in agreement to what they've said, possibly a director or heads of different departments might be more beneficial to our school community, and it could be teachers on stipends for some of these departments, or even breaking our assistant principals that are here in the middle high school down into three separate people, not all men, but three separate people, who would have the different jobs. Again, I was concerned that one of our assistant principals is working directly with the guidance department, doing 504s as the chairperson, taking on health, nursing, and PE, all under one, one person. I think both of our assistant principals are stressed with the amount of work that they are doing, so I think we should look at that a little bit more closely in the coming years.
Thank you. Question number six. What is your position on diversity, equity, and inclusion? Specifically, do you think there is too much, too little, or just the right amount of attention paid to this issue in our district? And we'll start with Allison, please.
I feel that there is always room for improvement, but I do think that we find a good balance in the amount of DEI that we offer. I do see that we could, diversity, equity, and inclusion has a lot of pieces to it. And that is also including not only a race piece, but there's a special education piece, a needs of different differentiation of individuals and a recognition of that. My goal would be to make sure that we create an environment where students feel comfortable and are happy to come to school so that they can focus on their education, because that is what is most important. I would like to see acceptance of everyone and everyone to feel like this, that school is a place where they belong. And, and you know, it's, DEI is a, is a hot topic. It's a rolling, evolving item, and I feel that as, as the time goes on in the three-year term, we can certainly look at it deeper and see what else we can, we can do as a district. But I do feel that right now we do have a good balance.
Thank you. Michelle.
I, Allison took the words out of my mouth when she said DEI is a hot topic. I think it, in the last five to seven years, we've heard more about professional development and DEI supports for students and educators across the nation. I think what we need to look at is starting from the top with bringing in more diverse staff as the time comes when, when teachers do retire or move on to different places. I work in a city school district where we have the opportunity to participate in virtual diversity fairs, to attract staff members, teachers, administrators, pathologists of all nationalities and races, which allows for students in a community like ours that have, that are from multiple backgrounds to look to the role, have role models that way. I think we have a long way to go, just as we do in technology, just as we do in learning the sciences, et cetera. I think all of the areas we have work to do.
Thank you. And Lori?
Yes, there's always room for improvement in every area of education. It's an ever-evolving system. So with that, I think that the district has, again, made great strides in addressing DEI for our students and staff training. We have a strategic plan that's in place that addresses the diverse needs of learners. We have put into effect the Rethink, which is the social and emotional learning that needs to take place, so that you can feel empathy for someone who may not look like you, behave like you, talk like you, whatever it is. And so we have put those things in place. Teachers are, and staff are receiving the training that they need, and it's being funneled down into the classrooms. I believe that the guidance counselors at the elementary school have begun with the Rethink program there, and it continues at the high school and middle school. And I'm really pleased that the, some of these things are in place. We continue to strive to make sure we're meeting the needs of all of our students by putting into place a robust curriculum that institutes three tiers of reading instruction for our littlest ones, and making sure that we have AP courses in place and building our sports program so that there's room for everybody, every student, to, to fit in and to grow and to, and develop.
Thank you. Moving on. What are your views on how to help kids who are either accelerated learners and might need additional challenges, or kids who may be slow learners and need more attention? We'll start with Michelle, please.
Can you repeat the first part of the question?
Sure. What are your views on how to help kids who are either accelerated learners and might need additional challenges, or kids who may be slower learners and need more attention?
So during my everyday, I am working with students of varying needs. Most districts, and I think including our own right now, don't focus on the accelerated learner as much as we should. It takes a lot of work to work with exceptional students that are above ground when it comes to their learning abilities. Oftentimes, students that are gifted are not challenged enough, and we find that there are behaviors that then follow that. I think we need to really look into that, look at how our students that have, with not only advanced placement classes or honors classes, but really looking into projects-based learning for those students to help to move them along. Students that are considered slow learners, it is actually a term used by New York State. Those are not students necessarily with disabilities, but students who have the right to have services within the general education classroom with the MTSS and the response to intervention and AIS services. I am not sure that this district is providing enough of that in the way I saw that teachers had been aligned to those support programs. So we should be looking into both ends of the spectrum with that.
Thank you. Lori?
Yes, so, agree with everyone? Yes, so I do think, I do believe that the district is starting to pay more attention to those students who are working above grade level, and I think that they are looking, exploring different programming that the students can take advantage of and be enriched. Some of the things that I know that they have in place, for example, is like the chess, we have the debate team. There are lots of different things that are already going on, and we are also engaging once again in tiered instruction. There's a win period, so that children are getting what they need and, at that time. So whether it is that they need enrichment, whether it is that they need supports in tier two and tier three instruction, those things are in place and they are being evaluated constantly now that there is, there are data teams now here. So I think that there's always room for improvement, and that is something that I believe the district is working on, and I'm, I can't wait to see what that looks like. Maybe it is that we have, as Michelle was saying, project-based learning, which I know that we do have in place already, so that they're working within their gifts and their strengths. So I think that there is, again, always room for improvement, but I think that our district knows that and is moving quickly to try to get something in place for those students who are working above, and while supporting those students who need more supports.
Thank you. And Allison.
My views on helping the accelerated learner, I have been very vocal about for at least sixteen years. I have advocated strongly for an accelerated learning program in the middle school and at Cottle. And at one point, when I felt that I was not getting what I needed, when I was PTA president, I went out, found a company, Curious on the Hudson, and I brought them into the district so that we could have enriched after-school program, an enriched after-school steam program for our students. And that helped not only the accelerated learner, but all learners. I also know a lot about students who need help with support. I have two children who, through their education, needed help with support. I know that when I was watching the presentation that Ms. Marash and Dr. Kyo gave a few weeks ago at the board meeting, that I was very impressed with what they are doing regarding AIS, response to intervention, using data like DIBELS to identify students earlier. And I thought to myself, wow, if my daughter had had this, we would not be in the situation that we are in now. And she is now twenty-five years old, and we are still dealing with her not being identified early enough. So I do feel that there is room for improvement. We do need to identify students earlier. We do need to still give children who need enrichment and enhanced support for high-level learning, and we also cannot forget about the kids who are in the middle.
Thank you. Next question. Do you envision the board considering a change to intramural or intramural sports teams? That is, should these begin in sixth as opposed to seventh grade? And at the same time, would you think about introducing foreign languages in sixth instead of seventh grade? And we will start with Lori, please.
I'm for all of that. If we can start our younger students finding a place for them within this, our sporting, our sports program, then why not start it early? They start playing soccer at kindergarten with the, the various sports programs that we have in our community. So why not bring that to the school? So I would love to see that happen for our sixth graders. And what was the second part?
Foreign languages.
Foreign language, yes. There are many districts who start foreign language, they call it world language instruction, believe it or not, at first grade. I'm actually a teacher in a district where foreign language, world language, is taught at first grade through a special. So I think that there is always room to, to expose our children to other languages, other cultures, just like they do in many other countries. So yes, I think that that is something that we could definitely look to do in this district, and we should. It just makes our kids more marketable, and it makes them more sensitive and empathetic to other cultures and ethnicities.
Thank you. Allison.
As far as intramural sports in the sixth grade, this has been brought up a lot, especially when I was PTA president. You often had parents coming looking for intramural support, sports. I do feel that we would need to look at the budget to see if it would work for our district, and who would run those intramural sports. Being a small district, it's hard to build teams. If there was a way that we can get sixth graders into our modified sports, I don't know if that's allowed, but if they're away, I think that's a fantastic idea. As far as the language, I absolutely would support it, starting in sixth grade. Like Lori said, I even would like to see it happen in Cottle. There was a time here that we had an Italian program that was run just by a community member through Cottle, and it was an after-school program, and there was a time when the district, she needed insurance in order to be able to run the program in Cottle. And she came to me and asked if the PTA would be willing to take it on, and we voted on it, and we unanimously decided that yes, we would take on that program, because we valued the, for children to learn about a different culture and a different language at such a young age.
Thank you. Michelle.
Of course, I don't think any one of us would say we weren't in favor of the intramurals for sixth grade or the foreign language. We, we know that our sixth graders somehow miss out on a lot of things, just by virtue of their age and being in the middle school, but not yet being allowed to participate in the modified sports in, in the county and in the state. So yes, I would definitely be in favor of that, but just like anything else, we'd have to look to the budget on how to be creative, on how to get coaches and voluntary staff, insurance as well for, for intramurals, possibly through mergers with other, other school districts like we do with some of our varsity sports even, could possibly be a way to look at it. I think it's going to take a little bit of time and research for that, but it's very much well worth the, the try. Foreign language, just, just like Lori said, I've been in districts that start foreign language as young as kindergarten and first grade. There's not testing, but it's that full immersion model where in some classes, there, there are bilingual classrooms that allow students to have the opportunity and the exposure. So I think as we go forward in looking into different ways to make our students more well-rounded, these are obviously some things we can look into.
Thank you. And we will, well, not end the forum, but end the question session with the question, what particular expertise would you bring to the board? And we will start with Allison, please.
So as I mentioned, I have been working in school accounting for over twenty years. Previous to working for the Penn School District, I worked for a 4201 school that is New York State-supported for blind and multi-handicapped children as the assistant controller. I touch on all aspects of school business. In my current position, I'm responsible for the health insurance budget, the running of their payroll, the final review of their payroll, the transportation budget, the retiree benefits, all of their BOSIs billing, and all of their special education billing. So, and I work with our treasurer on doing a lot of the budget process. So I touch on a lot of different aspects of running a school, and that is what I would be able to bring to the board the most. I would also be able to bring to the board my vast knowledge and history. I, I have been through this district. I have been working with key stakeholders in the district and administration, and I remember where we came from and can work towards making us go in the direction that we want to go to.
Thank you. Michelle.
So as a career educator, I've had the opportunity to also wear many hats, although my current expertise is in special education. I've been a teacher in general education classrooms. I have been a workshop facilitator for different professional learning opportunities for teachers. I have been part of the hiring process for teachers, teaching assistants, aides, pathologists, administrators, and assistant directors. I've also been an acting assistant. I've also been an acting assistant principal in a neighboring school district. So I had the taste of being in a school building five days a week when I wasn't a teacher, but from behind a different desk and out on a different playground. So having the knowledge of what the day-to-day responsibilities are with so many different hats, I think I bring a different flavor to what the board would need and rounding out all of the professions that we have on this current board.
I think, Lori, did we hear from, yeah, that's what I, I apologize. Lori, your answer, I apologize.
So I am a career educator as well. I have experience with curriculum mapping, even the development of a strategic plan, which this district, when I first came here, did not have one. It was at my urging and press that I got them to move to make a strategic plan. And that strategic plan has been really good in the last four years, and we've really worked very hard. This district has really worked hard to meet every one of the pillars. So I bring that experience. I've already been a board member here, and so I have a lot of expertise on how boards are supposed to run, how to collaborate with the administration, school community, teachers. And now that I'm back in the classroom, I am on the front lines of education every day. One of the reasons I went back was, again, because I didn't want to hear anymore, I'm out of touch, I really don't understand what's going on today, it's so different than yesterday, maybe when you were in school. So now I'm back in the classroom, and I can employ all the great things that I've learned in my career and also implement a lot of the research that I have done around critical thinking, with our kids being exposed to all kinds of social media, IA, news and everything coming from every which angle. They have to learn this, that, and the other. I think that it's important that our children are taught how to synthesize information and how to really look deeply at information and see what they can pull out that benefits them. So I bring a lot to the table with respect to that.
Thank you. Thank you to all three of you as we move into our closing statements. And we will start with Allison, please.
I would like to start by thanking all of the district members watching tonight and listening with an open mind. Additionally, I want to give thanks to the PTA and the League of Women Voters. It is my hope and would be my honor to serve the entire Tuckahoe School District as a dutiful board member. I wish to build upon and strengthen the foundation of which we have already established throughout my 20 years as a Tuckahoe resident. I will work collaboratively and diligently with my fellow board members in the interest of excellent education for all students. It is my belief that my experience with school finance will help to enrich our district. My lengthy knowledge of the district through the varying committees I aided will benefit the students and the faculty as well. At this time, I would like to request your support for the upcoming election on Tuesday and preemptively give my gratitude to those who do. Thank you also to Michelle and Lori for caring enough about our district to want to serve. Good night.
Thank you. Lori.
Yes. So I'm an experienced educator. I'm a teacher who believes that the culture and educational program and support services must be informed and sensitive to the student body's social and emotional needs so that each student is fully present and engaged in learning. Further, instructional excellence must be the norm, and each instructional team member must be committed to professional mastery and supported in a way that allows for its development and demonstration. Since I came here 10 years ago and since my time on the board, I've advocated for many of the programming that you see in place, such as the pre-K universal program, Orton-Gillingham, special education RTI programming, more AP courses, vocational programming, and many other models of educational best practices. Most of these things, most of these initiatives are really now in place, and it happened during my tenure on the board. I hope to continue to work with the board and the school community to keep us moving forward and maintain the momentum toward our mission, which is excellence for all.
Thank you. And thank you to our candidates and to our audience. Oh, I have to, again, I'm so sorry. Sorry.
Again, I would like to thank the PTA, the League of Women Voters, the community residents that are here tonight, and those at home that are watching. I want to thank both Allison and Lori for being part of this forum tonight. I know we were all a little nervous. I wouldn't like to reach out just one time to request that you have everyone you know come out and vote, because the vote is the most important part of this. So next Tuesday night, if you believe in me as the candidate that should be supporting not only you and your children, but this community at large, I'd ask you to please come out and vote for me as the new board trustee. Thank you.
Apologies again. And now, thank you to our candidates and to our audience. A reminder that this forum has been recorded and will be available on your sponsoring league's website until Election Day, which is next Tuesday, May 21st. I also want to remind you of the unique and important role played by the League of Women Voters here in the community and across the country. The league works to register voters, educate them on issues of the day, and to protect their right to vote. Your local league is made up of volunteers who devote their time and energy. Your participation and assistance are always welcome. Thank you, and have a wonderful evening.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you.[1792.21][1792.21][applause][1793.21]